I have this report and then you're doing the.
Yeah, sure. Yep. Good evening. I would like to call to order the Concord Township Board of Trustees meeting for September 4th, 2024. If you would, please join me in the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Lucci.
Present.
Mr. McIntosh.
Present.
Mr. Don Dorfer.
Present.
Okay, moving into our approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the August 5th, 2024 staff meeting minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the August 7th, 2024 regular trustee meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving into the next section of business, our elected officials report. And starting us off this evening will be Mr. Patriarca, our fiscal officer.
Thank you, Mr. Don Dorfer. As of August 31st, 2024, we were 67% of the way through the calendar year. The treasury balance for the 21 active funds within the township treasury was $8.9 million. The treasury balance includes approximately $372,000, $372,000 in funds set aside for specific projects. Year-to-date expenditures are currently at 62% of the amount appropriated for 2024, while year-to-date revenue is at 96% of the annual budget. These figures continue to keep Concord Township on track and within the 2024 budgets. In addition, I responded to a handful of emails, calls, and many, many impromptu conversations over the holiday and the week prior in regards to the sexennial reevaluation notices that were sent out by the county auditor in regards to the real estate within Lake County. In response to that, the conversations we had were a little bit more in-depth, a little more personal, but as more of a broad strokes recommendation, I strongly encourage all of our residents to attend or watch on YouTube. We're gonna have a live feed to Administrator Rose's second rendition of the Understanding Your Taxes class, which is going to be on September 10th. Mr. Rose is offering two time slots at 1:30 and 6:30 PM. Assume that's correct, Mr. Rose?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. It's gonna be a perfect opportunity to ask any specific questions you may have. I believe Administrator Rose will clear up a handful of common misconceptions on what exactly the ramifications of that sexennial reevaluation will be. So I strongly recommend all of our residents to attend or watch live or the replay of that Understanding Your Taxes class course. However, we're going to term that workshop. If you have any additional questions in regards to the taxes or township finances, please do not hesitate to reach out to the fiscal office directly by phone. My number is 440-354-7516. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Patriarca. And moving into the trustees' report, starting us off is Mrs. Lucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone enjoyed their Labor Day weekend. Thank you to all the workers who contribute to our thriving community. Your dedication, hard work is really the backbone of our society. Welcome September and all that that comes with that. We have a lot to look forward to in the coming months. People have asked me also about their property reevaluation, and I am going to also put a plug into Andy's classes to educate you on questions that you have. You can also reach out to us, the auditor's office, but the presentation from Mr. Rose is very informative, very easy to understand, and we appreciate him taking the time to do that. We've had some calls about new development along Cryo Road next to Key Bank and the Waffle House that will be Taco Bell. We continue to wait for the ice cream store, ice cream and the car wash, which we're hoping for sometime this month, I think in September. So that's coming up. Thank you to the county for finishing up their repair work on Ravenna Road. A few residents did call to say that they didn't see much notice on that scheduled work. We do try to give everybody information on our website, on the e-grapevine, on signs. So it, it really helps when people come to the coffee hour or they come to the meetings, as people have come to our office hours. We love that, and to our meetings, to get information on what's going on in the township. Thanks to the residents who did call and have questions, and we were able to talk and clear some of that, some of that out. Since our last trustee meeting, we did participate in a monthly staff meeting. I did join Andy and the group with the Coffee with the Administrator. Thanks to everyone that came out for that. Our service department continues to be busy. The parking lot looks great, thanks to our service. And as always, our fire department, always busy putting out fires on Route 90 on Labor Day weekend. You know, we think about enjoying our weekend and being off, and our fire department is continuously working along with law enforcement, and we are very grateful that we have them keeping us safe here in Concord Township. Good luck to the children in school. Another reminder to watch out for buses. And with that, I hope everyone has a great week, and please reach out if you ever have any questions. That concludes my report.
With you, Mr. McIntosh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone had a great Labor Day weekend. I want to give a big shout out to Mr. Supler and the rec. Department. We had Community Day after. And, and we say this every, we say this every year, after what a fantastic job the rec. Department does, but I know staff brought their kids in. Their own children get involved and do this because they're so engaged in it. And I just, it's been a couple of years now since we didn't do it in COVID, our first year as trustees, and we've done this now. And I just, I look at the effort they pour in, and I don't think the people in Concord understand how hard this rec. Department works and how much energy they put into it. They, you guys see it, right? It's just, it's intense. So hats off to them. Thank you. A big, big thank you to them and their families, who all put their heart and soul into this and their energy. So it's much appreciated by us and everyone in the community. Had a interesting conversation with, Rita McMahon and I, the jet administrator, had a conversation with the owner of Quail Hollow. So the civil law report did create some conversation directly with the ownership. We sort of bypassed the US-based property manager rep guy, whoever that is, talked with, directly with the investment manager. And so it was a very constructive conversation. I, I don't know that I want anyone to get their hopes up stuff's gonna happen. They are motivated. The report did bring some needed attention to the state of the property, and it was a very positive dialogue. So I feel great about the energy that the jets put into that, and I think the investment in that report was well-founded and it's producing results. So stay tuned to that. I've had a lot of questions about the fire levy. I've had a couple of emails, and some folks have asked me, why is it needed? Can you explain it? And also on the back of the property revaluation conversation as well, you know, those things are happening together. And I have talked with two people about the revaluation, and I think there's a point. And again, I'm gonna promote Andy's tax class. I learned a lot about property taxes and since I became a trustee, and there's one person that teaches it to me, and he's sitting right over there. So he does a great job, but just because your property tax value went up X percent does not mean that is what your tax bill will go up. It is only gonna affect inside millage, and if that is something that you don't understand, you really should go to see him in his class, because it's not something I understood so many years ago. And it's complicated, so there's a lot to it, and you really should go get checked out. I work with stormwater and some neighbors. There's a water issue to try to get something done. Did have a conversation with a resident about a noise complaint, so talking about that. I know at the staff meeting, chief and deputy chief reported they got that grant for the EMS grant for heart rate monitors, substantial dollar amount. We don't get those grants every day, so that was a huge win. And I know chief just became a grandfather, so congratulations to him. And I'll close by saying I put it on social media, but I had a chance to see Alec Dawson, this is the son of Amy Dawson, on Monday. He flew the C-5N, flying for the Air Force. Energetic, great young man, made, made me miss his mother. I, I love working with John. It's great to have you here, but I walked away from that conversation missing Amy a little bit, so.
For sure.
Hard to believe it's coming up on two years, but it was great to see him, and it was really neat. He, he said he'd seen all the love on social media, and he made a point to fly over Concord.
Twice.
Twice, yeah. On the way, he told me on Monday, he said, when I leave, I'm gonna try to, I'm going over Concord again.
He did.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, he flew right over. Low.
Yeah, it was great.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah. And that's a, I mean, as an aviator, that's a fantastic piece. And that thing is huge.
Great tribute to his mother, also, who we all miss.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. I would also like to shout out some kudos to Sean and our rec. Department. I did receive several calls from residents applauding the community days, events and festivities, the parade. I got some calls on the concert series. Everybody's just, you know, was really complimenting the rec. Department, so we appreciate all your efforts there. I did get a call from an HOA member on a private property development in Concord. We had talked about this before. They had a situation regarding a dispute on an easement and repairs of some roadway. I got a call before the meeting today. He had indicated that they had came to an agreement with the business that was involved in that easement, and they're gonna make the corrections to the roadway, so I was happy to hear about that. You mentioned the, the energy being generated on Quail Hollow. We still received, you know, several calls on that. As we all know, it's an eyesore for Concord. We're hoping to get some resolve with that property issue there. Did have a call from another resident regarding some retention pond maintenance issues. I spoke with Mr. Brown about. They're working with the county and the township on an easement issue to try to access that, to dredge that. We'll keep monitoring that. But I did talk to the resident, had some lengthy conversation with him on that. Other than that, I did also receive some calls regarding the, the fire levy on the ballot and some questions about the sexennial revaluations for real estate properties and trying to educate people that, you know, everybody knows Mr. Rose's classes is very informative and should clearly dial up on how those dollars come into play. So I would urge everybody to watch that if they have the ability to do that or attend. And with that, that closes my remarks, and we will move into the departmental reports for the evening, and starting off with Mr. Rose, our administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Don Dorfer, members of the board, Mr. Patriarca, members of the audience. Good evening. I'm gonna start with the recent bid opening for the waterline project, and then I'll move into the items for the agenda. On August 30th, 2024, sealed bids were opened for the Auburn and Girdle Road Waterline Project. We did receive six bids. The bid results were as follows. Trax Construction Company was $1,361,928. Mr. Excavator Incorporated was $1,615,106. JS Bova Excavating LLC was $1,677,124. SET Incorporated was $1,741,175. Rudzik Excavating Incorporated was $1,799,518.76. And the sixth bid was Eclipse Company LLC at $2,074,363. Our consulting engineers, CEC, specifically Bob and Jeff. Jeff was here for the bid opening. He did take the packages back with him. He reviewed the packages thoroughly, and then he provided correspondence to the township, recommending that we enter into agreement with Trax Construction, as they have a solid bid, and they were the lowest and best bid. Moving on to items from the agenda, obviously, under old business is Resolution 2024 TAC 12, which is the Villas of Canterwood RID. Item A is Resolution 2024 TAC 25, that's the annual streetlight assessment. Item B is a purchase order to Ascendence Trucks in the amount of $108,977. That's for a plow truck body and plow package. And then item C is a purchase order for Trax Construction. That's for the waterline project I just read the bids on. But item C is a PO to Trax Construction in the amount of $1,361,928 for the waterline extension project. And item C, that, that is, we received $500,000 from the state capital budget infrastructure piece that Senator Serino and Representative Calendar worked through, and we again thank them for their help and support. And then the remainder of that comes from the Lake County Commissioners and the ARPA funding that they have. So we thank the commissioners as well for helping us get this project underway. Moving on to a few other things, this Saturday, September 7th, is our annual shred day. It's always very popular. The event runs from 10:00 AM to noon. Residents may drop off up to three copy paper-sized boxes, and, but the boxes will not be returned. It's a drop-and-go service. If you have any questions, you can contact Town Hall at 440-354-7501. We'll be happy to answer your questions about shred day. That's, that's on Saturday. I don't know if anybody's heard, but I'm going to be presenting an Understanding Your Taxes class next week. Just a reminder, it's on Tuesday, September 10th, and again on Tuesday, September 17th. The afternoon sessions begin at 1:30 in the afternoon. The evening sessions begin at 6:30 PM. They're all at the community center. Yeah. And then the last thing I have is the next Coffee with the Administrator is scheduled for Thursday, September 26th. That's at 9:00 AM. If anybody has any other questions, please feel free to give me a call at Town Hall. Thank you. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Fire Department, I believe we have Deputy Chief Bedell with us this evening to give the report. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start off, I'm filling in for chief tonight. He's welcoming his first grandchild. So congratulations to him and his family. Baby and mom are doing well, so that's, that's a good thing. Total runs for August, we're at 340. Year-to-date, that brings us to 2196 as of today. In comparison, we were at 2004 last year, kind of trending about 10% ahead, our call volume. 212 events of those were EMS runs, 128 non-EMS runs. We had three fire events, two which were in Concord, a kitchen fire, and a pool heater structure fire, and then one fire outside of Concord. Mutual aid was given 26 times. We received mutual aid 14 times. This month, or in August, we had 43%, 148 calls going on where we were overlapping, so 43% of the time, we had multiple vehicles on, on the road responding to our emergency calls. Fire prevention-wise, we did 45, 45 inspections, two plan reviews, community education events. We had our, another Red Cross Babysitter class. That was August 12th and 13th. We had nine students in for that. August 15th, we were at Hershey Bonisori doing CPR class for their employees. We also had the opportunity in August to go to Stephen Douglas Corporation. We were able to do a full fire drill with their employees and fire extinguisher training. And we partnered with Painsel Township Fire at the end of the month to assist their non-teaching staff on fire extinguisher education. We did nearly 100 employees there. Reminder, upcoming class is October 7th, Monday, October 7th, at 6 o'clock for our CPR class. We have several residents already signed up for that. We look forward to seeing you. It's a great class, two to three-hour class that brushes you up. I know we talked with Mrs. Lucci before the meeting about, hey, do you go over infants? We do, and that's one of our targets. We get first-time mom and dad, and then those first-time grandparents coming into the class are pretty common. So if you're in one of those situations, or if you just want to learn a little bit more about saving someone's life, we, we encourage you to be there. Wishing everyone a great start to the school year. Please be safe, especially when we're seeing the schoolchildren out there in those school zones, and especially when the school buses are in our operation. And be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Service Department, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Service Department in the month of August continued to make concrete slab replacements in the Brightwood subdivision. Our concrete crew has poured more than 600 yards of concrete to date. The crack seal, the crack seal crew finished up this year's crack sealing of asphalt roadways. Our Dura Patch repairs continue to move throughout the township. The Service Department poured the footers for the three new columbariums at the cemetery. They will be installed by the Monument Company tomorrow. The 2024 road resurfacing projects are wrapping up. Viewmont Drive and the parking lots at Town Hall and Community Center reserved a Reclamite Asphalt Rejuvenator. Winchell Road culverts were installed the week of 8/19, and the milling and depth repairs took place along with, along with the two-inch intermediate asphalt course. Those are scheduled to continue this week and into the next couple of weeks. The chip and seal surface course will likely be about a week out or so. Concord Township, with the assistance of Lake County Stormwater Department, is working on a drainage improvement project on Grand Ridge Point. The project is progressing well. Another storm sewer project on Tewksbury Lane will be starting up the week of 9/9. This is a detention easement maintenance project, replacing an outlet storm line and redefining the detention area to design grades. These projects are funded by Concord Township Stormwater Funds. The yard waste drop-off is now open at the Service Department. The hours of operation are 7:30 AM to 2:30 PM, Monday through Friday. Our annual fall brush day collection is scheduled for Saturday's, October 5th and October 19th. From 7:30 AM to 2:30 PM, residents can drop off brush no larger than four inches in diameter. No lumber, landscape timbers, railroad ties, or stumps are permitted. The yard waste drop-off will also be open during, during these hours on these dates. The Service Department encourages residents with questions or concerns to contact us at 440-350-3225, or by email at concortwp.com under Service Department. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay, zoning department giving Ms. Friedman's report this evening will be Mr. Rose. Thank you, Mr. Don Dorfer, members of the board. Zoning Department report for, for August. During the month of August, the zoning department staff processed 32 zoning permit applications, some of the highlights. 10 accessory buildings, six fences, five pools, four decks. Two commercial buildings, Taco Bell, that's being built on Cryo Road right now, and outside design custom pools and spas. We'll be going on Ravenna Road just north of where Old Stone School is. They'll be going there. Had busy, out busy performing inspections, completed 114 property inspections, issued 38 certificates of compliance, opened up 16 new investigations about potential zoning violations. And then the zoning staff would like me to remind everyone, as, as, I hate to say as summer's coming to a close because that makes me sad, but as, as we start working our way towards fall, people start pulling out the boats and campers and stashing them back on their residential property. Please be mindful that if you plan to store your recreational vehicles on your property, there are rules. They have to be on an improved surface. They have to be behind the minimum building setback, and they've got to be screened with fencing from adjacent properties or vegetation. So if you're gonna stash your boat or RV and you're not quite sure, please call the zoning office, talk to the zoning inspector, 440-354-7506. And that concludes the zoning department's report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Recreation Department, Sean Supler, our director.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Just want to start off by thanking all of you for the kind words about the Community Day event that we had on August 10th, for all your support and everything that you do for us in the recreation market. So we thank you very much for that. To all of our sponsors that we had to make that event super successful, we can't thank them enough. Our newly printed grapevine that should be released here shortly, if you haven't gotten it yet, list all of our sponsors in there, making sure we get them out as much as possible. Also show some social media as well. So we thank our sponsors for everything that they contributed to us and the event. To the Fire Department and Sheriff's Office for keeping the community safe, especially in regards to the fireworks, which is always, you know, a key point for them. Also those departments for participating in the parade, and for the Fire Department and their staff for running the wonderful pancake breakfast at the new fire station this year. To Tim Brown and the Service Department and his guys for all the work that they did leading up to the event and the day of, which is a very long event for those guys as well. So I appreciate everything that they did for us. And then lastly, to the Recreation Department staff, Suzie and Rachel, for the countless hours of work that they put in to make that event run very successful and smoothly this year, as well as our volunteers and facility attendants and anyone else that worked for us that day. It's, it's a long day for us, and we appreciate all the help we can get. So thank you very much to all of those people as well. The other event I want to point out is we had our senior citizen appreciation event. That was last Wednesday. We had over 75 seniors come through the community center that day. We had roughly 15 vendors present there who were passing out goodies, pamphlets for their businesses, all that kind of stuff. And for the second year in a row, University Hospitals partnered up with a local farm, and they handed out massive tote bags full of fresh vegetables and produce and giant melons, all that kind of stuff that they gave out to every senior that came. So it was just a great partnership that we have with UH, so thank you to them. The Fire Department was also there doing blood pressure checks and, you know, just making sure everyone was safe there too. So thank you to them for participating in that event. Some of our upcoming events, today we had Alzheimer's Association presentation for our 55-plus group. On September 18th, Sounds of Life Hearing is doing a presentation on the importance of taking care of their hearing. That business, which is the Concord business, is also running a hearing clinic on September 26th. That's from 11:00 to 2:00, where seniors can call and make appointments and have their hearing checked and hearing aids cleaned and some other services as well. So a partnership that we're working on with that local business. September 25th is Fall Cleanup Bingo for the 55-plus. And then new program, an organization that's working their way out through Lake County through grants is a, is a, every Thursday, from Thursday, September 26th to October 31st, with Fair Hill Partner is Chronic Disease Self-Management. That runs every Thursday from 9:30 to 12:00. Be able to sign up for that free program to learn all about that. Some of our youth classes coming up, we have our rookie sports soccer program for three- to five-year-olds that starts September 10th and goes to October 8th. We have two sessions at 5:30 and 6:30. We currently have over 30 kids signed up for that program. So rookie sports continues to do very well, and we'll be doing two basketball programs in the fall and winter with them as well. We have kids' dance classes starting Thursday evenings that begin September 19th. Some of our adult classes, we have intro pickleball starting this coming Saturday, the 7th, from 11:00 to 12:00 PM, or 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We have gentle yoga and chair yoga on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings starting up. Yoga's Pilates Fusion on Wednesday evenings, another yoga class on Monday nights. I don't think anyone has talked about this yet here, but there's a class called Understanding Your Taxes with. I don't, it's September 10th from 1:30 to 2:30, and 6:30 to 7:30, and also September 17th. We are gonna be doing our candidates forum with League of Women Voters that will be on Thursday, October 3rd at 6:00 PM at the community center. So that'll be all of our local candidates up for, for positions will be there, and, you know, they, they do a great job of putting that event out for us. So we look forward to having them there. Our adaptive special needs Halloween dance is Friday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the community center. And then our main event for the community is Saturday, October 26th, and that's our Fall Fest, and we will be doing that this year at the new fire station from 10:00 to 11:30. And we'll have a lot more information on that as we get a little bit closer. Old Stone School is hosting a Friday night Lights event on September 13th from 7:00 to 8:30, and an active seniors who lunch hike on September 27th from 12:00 to 1:30. That's with Dan Maxson. And you haven't checked out his latest project, which is his storybook walk, which is a story around the community gardens. We suggest you do that. And there'll be a new story. I believe he's releasing a new one right around Halloween. And lastly, you should receive your fall/winter grapevine, the printed one that covers basically from September through February. That is being mailed out currently, so you should get that shortly if you have not already. If you don't get one, let us know, and we'll be, we'll be sure to get you one. We hope everyone enjoys that. A lot of hard work, especially programming. Over six months out for programs can be challenging, but we were able to get that done. So please continue to sign up for the e-grapevine. Visit the website, concortwp.com, or call the Recreation Department if you have any questions or need anything else at 440-639-4650. And thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate your report. Our Sheriff's Office report, I spoke with Captain Patterson today. They are not here this evening due to the fact They are not here this evening due to the fact that their IT issue surrounding Niobers reporting and getting their stats, they had some complications that they're working on, so they didn't have the stats. But he did indicate to me that during the this past month that they made, one of the major incidents was they had several B&amp;E to vehicles on Martinique and that development over on the northwest quadrant of Concord Township along 84. They developed a suspect from video from the use of debit credit cards, and they identified him and issued a warrant for his arrest. So hopefully they'll pick him up, but they're going to do some additional reporting next month.
Good.
Okay, so moving on to our audience portion of the meeting. If you would like to come up to the lectern, you can speak and state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, I think everybody has already spoken. We will move into old business. And that is a vote.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2024-12, creating the Villas of Canterwood Incentive District and declaring improvements to parcels within the district to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation as provided in Section 5709.73 of the Ohio Revised Code and related authorizations.
I know, second. Okay, discussion.
So I appreciate everyone here with your feedback. And of course, our collaboration with the schools is very important to us as well. I voted with the Ivy Ridge RID in favor of it because I feel it is a funding mechanism that we can take advantage of with the township because we have limited opportunities for other funding mechanisms. We not only have to think about children, we have to think about seniors too. You talked about inflation, you talked about increased spending. That's something that is very on the forefront with us as well. And to have funding that we can allocate to certain projects, as important as the fire station is for us, to me is extremely important. Fire apparatus, we know that the costs are just through the roof for all that. We get, you know, and to have funding available for that so that we can maybe have contingency funding for when we have a road collapse. Or we get emails every day from folks that want bike paths, that want the playground equipment taken care of, that their roads are not on the road list to repair for five years and, you know, they need something fixed. So we have many different issues in our township that we need to worry about other than, not that schools are not the most important, but again, we have a lot of other things to take care of. And I feel that this is a funding mechanism that we are, the O R C recognizes and is not taking away from the school's budget to the point where it is detrimental.
So I'd like to start off by saying that I have the utmost respect for Mr. Platko and Mr. Wade. Worked together for a long time, worked with the schools, done a lot of good stuff together. This is, I think, definitely was something that we all struggled with, I'm sure. I mean, I've gone to bed thinking about, you know, is this the right decision? I'm sure my colleagues have also. It's 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 a tough time right now. You know, I've had, both of my girls were in the Mentor School District, they 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 dwell there. But, you know, when you look at where we are at, community wise, we have an obligation. And I know, we feel the calls both sides of the coin here, for and against the RID. But overwhelmingly, there was a common theme from many of the residents was, you know, you the the board needs to look at other financial streams of revenue to fund the township operations outside of additional taxing burden on 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 the residents. And I I understand that. I mean, it's tough, you know, you got these sextennial evaluations. But, you know, I'm a firm believer that, yeah, strong schools are definitely a sign of a go together with a strong community and and community health, as well as the services that that community provides. And, you know, safety is is huge. And I've been in the industry 32 years now, I've never seen it so fragile as it is now. I mean, if we don't have the ability to maintain, you know, capital improvements such as, you know, stations to maintain the health and wellness of our first responders, equipment that they need to function, that that's that is detrimental to the health and wellness of the community and most definitely will impact the property values of the people that live here. And 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 once we start down that road where we're not able to provide those services adequately and the stress is kept on the few that are here, there's a domino effect. We see it now across major cities and and into some of the suburbs where, you know, first responders are leaving certain communities, going to other communities. And in a time where recruitment and retention is imperative, it's important. And again, this is not due to budgetary shortfalls. I mean, I think Mr. Patriar can attest, I mean, the the cost of equipment has gone up at least 20% on on like, you know, apparatus, equipment, safety equipment. We're not even talking about personnel here. That's why we have a fire levy that we're putting on in the fall behind, you know, a sextennial reevaluation because there's a need. We we have pass through costs that we've had to, you know, deal with since, you know, 18% increases in law enforcement, increases in fire. But we, it's important that, because it directly affects the health and well-being of a community. And it's not easy. I mean, I I know. But I I I struggled with it. But I, you know, the schools and and definitely, you know, safety and other services that the township provides, they have to be maintained, and we have a duty and obligation as stewards of the township to 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 make sure that we can do what we can to adequately provide the necessary services for our residents. So, you know, and I sympathize with with what you said. I mean, I I do. I I see both sides of it. It's it's a challenge. I mean, schools definitely are, you know, are have a direct impact with the community, as does, you know, you know, safety and and other services. And they all go to the health and wellness of the community. And once those start to, you you can't support them, it it's it's the domino effect is is not good.
Yeah, I I would like to echo a sentiment of my colleagues. Making these decisions is always tough. When you decide to run for public office and take on the responsibility of of a community, those challenges, those decisions, and some of them, you know, we're going to vote on some POs tonight, those are the easy decisions. And and the things like this get more challenging. Placing legislation on the ballot that does something like this or asking taxpayers for funding for fire stations or levies for operations, those are the hard decisions. So I I don't believe I took this decision lightly to to address a couple of comments. First, this doesn't, this is a, the money that that the RID would collect is inside millage, and it doesn't change voted millage. So for people that voted for levies, those levies, it's just like our safety levy, that it goes in, it's collecting a certain amount of money. The more people come in, the effective millage drops and the dollar amount changes that RID doesn't affect those dollars. So the vote, will of voters is not being misdirected here. It's inside millage and its growth. It's inside millage that we're all seeing an increase on this year as well through the property evaluation. So I wanted to make that. This is something that the state legislature at one point decided townships ought to have the authority to do. So I would dispute that it's a loophole. It's something that the legislature expressly empowered townships to do. So I took that into some of my consideration. And I certainly do have empathy for, I mean, all of us. I spent a lot of time working with every community here when I sat on the ad hoc committee for the local government fund, talked to the metro parks, you know, had some of the similar conversations. The other communities that had it, everybody's dealing with inflation, everybody's dealing with the crunch on dollars. And so I didn't look at this decision without empathy for that situation. I do look at it from a standpoint that it's a, and it was mentioned that it's a, these are low percentages for the school's budget. So I think that's something that definitely I took into consideration when I thought about, you know, the meaningfulness of what this does for our budgets and and the the contrast and perspective. And again, I go back, the state legislature decided townships, we're a township, we don't collect income tax, we do have a JED. Right now, we're keeping a lot of things afloat for that, and it was designed to be something that was more of a non-recurring aspect of our budget, and yet here we are using it operationally. Ever since I became a trustee, taxes and fiscal responsibility within the community has been an issue. It was an issue when I was on the ballot in 2019. It was an issue the next year in 2020 when we brought that decision back to the voters and were able to get the legislation for the fire station, the levy passed. We decided to ask for less money than the previous board did. I'd also like to clarify that the redesign didn't really save money. The project cost stayed the same. We decided to ask for less, and in my view, it was a mistake because inflation bit and it bit us hard. We we are still paying a price for that, and that project has stalled as a result. And we're a bit in our position because we were trying to be too empathetic to the will of the community and not taking the big picture and our responsibility and looking at the picture big. And and that's what we do here. It's it's not that I have an ill will of the school, I don't. I want to have a cooperative and constructive relationship. But when we have residents in the community screaming at us for fiscal responsibility and why are you always coming to us? As I said last time when we voted on this, I felt it's our responsibility as elected officials for this community to do the best for our community. And if we have tools available to us and we don't look at them and we don't look to use them, I think that we're failing to do our job. And I realize that some people are going to look at that and saying we're not being fair to the schools. And I can respect that argument, I can respect that opinion. And if I was on the other side of the table, I might feel the same way. But we have the legal authority to do it. It's it's something that I feel is necessary, and I think right now it's something that, it's an incremental impact to us. It's going to incrementally come up and down in in its 10 years. Concord has been doing TIFs for a decade at least.
Since 12.
In our business districts, they've been doing them for a while. So this is not a, this is just a tool we can use in the residential. I certainly think as we evaluate the ability to do this more, I know we kind of popped this on the school districts this year, but I'm definitely open to conversations as more developments are are being constructed. This particular developments are very targeted towards commu-, you know, residences that are very unlikely to have very many children. And I also did take that into some consideration and how I feel about this. So, yeah, again, I I we committed to this process and and I I think it's the right thing to do. And like I said, those decisions are never, they're not easy ones. And sometimes we just have to have the courage of our conviction.
Roll call vote?
Mrs. Lucci.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes.
Mr. Donador.
Yes. Okay, now we will move into the new business for the evening, and there are several votes in new business.
Mr. Chairman, I approve, move to approve Resolution 2024-25, the street lighting assessment.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase order to Ascendence Trucks in the amount of 108,977 for plow truck body and plow package.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve P O to Tracks Construction Company in the amount of $1,361,928 for water main extension project.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I I I'd like to.
This is big.
Yeah, I would like to thank Senator Serino's office for coming through. I know we we were not able to do this project because we had to reappropriate our ARPA dollars to the Safety Forces budget this year. And his office came through with our match that allowed it. I'd also like to thank the county commissioners because they're paying for the larger portion of it with their ARPA dollars. So, you know, ARPA was something that was sort of controversial. I know some people felt it was government overspend. But again, I look back at our position for Concord tax dollars. We didn't responsibly spend that. I think we would be misrepresenting our taxpayers because we're all going to end up paying that tax bill. So I am very appreciative of the amount of cooperative government that went into getting this project done. And I know it's something that we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do if it weren't for this money because where are we getting $1.3 million to put infrastructure in for relatively lower count of homes, which is why they don't have it. So meaningful project and thank you to other elected officials for their support.
Yep, I agree. Thank you to Commissioners, Senator Serino. I am very happy for the residents that fought really hard. We still have residents that don't have great water. We can't take care of everyone right now, but we're at least able with the help and these this this money to take care of this this group, and so we're extremely happy for that.
Yeah, it's another circumstance, you know, it's an example of the fact that, you know, we had appropriated that money for that project and we had to divert it just so we didn't lose first responders here. It was sort of a Band-Aid for us, and, you know, it didn't make them happy, but we gave them a commitment that we work diligently to try to, you know, bring some money in to get that project done. And thank you to Senator Serino and the county for that and all the work Andy did along the way. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I vote or move to approve the Fire Department approval of conditional offer of employment to John Bateman as a part-time regular firefighter, EMT basic, pending background check and physical.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the conditional offer of employment to Jake Green as part-time regular firefighter, basic, pending background check and physical.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Fire Department's conditional offer of employment to Stuart Horvath as a part-time regular firefighter, EMT basic, pending background check and physical.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the promotion of William Langaki to the position of part-time firefighter, effective 9, September 1st, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we had some items that were voted on at the August 26th, 2024 staff meeting. That was Mrs. Lucci made a motion to change the first meeting of each month to a 5:00 p.m. start time with office hours starting at 4:00 p.m. beginning in October. Mr. Donador for seconded, vote three A's. I am moving into future meetings and announcements. Mr. Patriar.
On September 7th, from 10:00 a.m. till noon, shred day right here on Town Hall Campus. September 11th at 7:00 p.m., BZA meeting here at Town Hall. September 13th at 8:00 a.m., JED meeting here at Town Hall. September 18th, from 6:30 to 7:30, trustee office hours in the conference room, immediately followed at 7:30 p.m. by the trustee meeting at Town Hall. Of course, must also plug again, one more time, Understanding Your Taxes class, September 10th and 17th. Afternoon sessions at 1:30, evening sessions at 6:30. I know we've said it upwards of 10 times this evening, but it is a very important topic. And I think that Mr. McIntosh expressing that the difficulty of understanding those to the details of, you know, that that tax bill, that one simple statement and the effects that it has and it trickles down the community is is worth at least understanding for each resident. So I know it seems a little redundant, but it's an important topic that I think goes in one ear and out the other for 99% of our residents.
I'm still asking questions five years later.
Exactly. And so September 10th and 17th.
Thanks, John. And that concludes our trustee meeting for this evening. Good evening, Concord Township. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for participating.